Seven oh one, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledging limits.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands from a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you could just make a prayer.
Dear Lord, please give us the strength to look over all the city and make the best decisions possible, you know, prudent and clear minded and in harmony in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Child?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
We need a motion to go and we're gonna change things up tonight. We're gonna go into executive session. So move. Thank you.
Second.
I'm agenda first.
Oh yeah, well, I'll motion to amend the agenda. To put executive session first.
Yep, I'll second that.
Mr. Child's already motioned to go into executive. I second that. Go with Susan Gattner. Yep.
Okay, we're gonna amend the agenda first, right?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you add on the record while you're going into executive session, you're going into speaker council.
Yes, we're going into executive session, O R C one twenty-one dot two-two for personal legal matters. We're going in to discuss legal matters with our council, Reminger Incorporated. And the time, and the time is at seven oh three.
Inviting in.
Inviting in council for Reminger, Taylor Sabinckton, Mr. Toy, Mr. Frank.
Auditor.
I already said Mr. Taylor, Mr. Sabinckton.
Mr. Tucker.
And Mr. Tucker.
Okay, Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session at eight fifteen.
Yeah, okay.
So move.
I'll second that.
Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Child?
Yes. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting, July twentieth? And, and also August first special meeting? Everyone had a chance to look at those? Any council discussion?
I just want to compliment Mr. Child, I'm doing a fine job finishing up that last meeting.
It was pretty spectacular.
I'll, I'll do those.
Yeah, I, I was following Susan's model. There you go.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Nothing?
Yes.
Okay, we have the auditor slash treasurer's report tonight. No, we don't. Okay, we're gonna counsel that. Mayor's court report, there is none. We have mayor's court. Oh, you got one?
I was gonna say, it's not auditor treasurer, man.
You got one there, Chief Fitch?
Yes, sir, I do. If you'd like to hear it.
Well, let's, let's read that off. Thank you.
Just give me a little rundown.
Okay.
So Jessica printed this off for me today. In the last, the current period, basically, meaning in the last month, there was three thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars brought in through the city revenue. The state revenue was nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, in the first one, the total, bringing the total to twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The state portion is nine ninety-two fifty this quarter and five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three for the year. And bringing the total revenue of this quarter, this current pay period, four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Yearly, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight. So there's your figures. I can get a copy of this, have her print this if you guys wanna see it, mail it.
It'd be nice to have it emailed to us, and she could do that.
I can do that.
That's great.
Email tomorrow before lunch.
We also have mayor's court tomorrow night, for anyone out there, at six o'clock. Get here early because it is going to be a busy one.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Chief Fitch.
I, I, we're moving on to citizens. Yeah, motion to accept the mayor's court report. I'll second that.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Yes.
Almost at Mr. Smith.
No.
All right, we're to citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? No, no, okay. Business organizational comments? Nope. And we have committee discussions. I saw that we have, we have some meetings scheduled this week.
We've got, I think it's Wednesday, six thirty. Money development, Thursday, six thirty.
Sorry. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? No? Okay, department updates? And we have police department tonight?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Chief Fitch, floor is yours.
I'd like to welcome y'all here tonight.
I feel welcome. Thanks for sticking around, chief. How'd you get put in the time?
Yeah, I love it. Most place I'd rather be.
Gets here many.
First of all, I want to introduce Jordan Castle. She's our new code officer. She started last Monday, so today she's completed six days, so we've got to see her come back this week for week number two. Just to give a little update on code, we've all been getting her squared away with things. She's issued twelve warnings already, so she's getting acclimated to that. She's been reviewing the code section and we've been going over it quite extensively. I've learned a lot. She's learning a lot of the codes and we're, we went and followed up today on some of the codes she originally cited last week on her first day. And most of those are complying so far, so. And nobody's been cited yet because it's still, it's only been total six days she's been here, but we're actually getting out there. She's got a long list of next round of people, so the officers are working, we're kinda acclimating everybody to having, you know, a code officer back, and so they're taking complaints and they're forwarding them to her and we're going, so you know, any citizens' complaints or anything like that, we're able to get Jordan briefed on it and we're kinda going with her and, and getting everything squared away on that end. And she's, I have very reason to believe that she won't be very successful. She's done a really good job. And deals well and represents the city well, deals well with people. She has much more patience than I probably would, so that's probably a good thing. It's a good combination, so. I just wanted everybody to introduce, so everybody knew Jordan. As far as the police department, Lexi Poll's on track to still be finished up and be completely implemented by a hundred percent by December. We're preparing to start rolling out, we've started to roll out actual policies now because we're doing segments. So that way, at the end of the year, they don't have two hundred and seventy rollout policies to start familiarizing themselves with. Our PEP risk insurance, two weeks ago, I think, I met with the risk control specialist. I was here talking with Scott, her name was Diana Wolf. She was very, very supportive of the fact and encouraged that we was using the Lexi Poll system. She was gonna look for some cost reduction as far as from the insurance, but she definitely was, said that it'll definitely reduce, reduce our liability. So she was actually, it was kinda nice to hear her input on that. So training, the officers are almost done. I've got them all fulfilling their year requirements. Twenty twenty-two CPT, we're on track to have everybody done by September. That was my goal. Even though they have till the end of December to finish it, I wanted it done by September. So everybody's on track to have that completed. A couple of guys has already have, has theirs completed. So we hired, as you know, Sam. We mercy started last, was it last week? Week before last, on a Wednesday. So this Wednesday will be her two-week anniversary. She's doing really well. She's been trained by Sergeant KJ Tracy. As far as updated training that's coming up the month of August, or is, Adams, Green, Ellen, Smith are going to report writing class in London, Ohio. Sam and Robbie Heerdorf are going to the Reed Interview and Interrogation School, which is the finest school in the county. I mean, it's the number one law enforcement interview interrogation school. Takosik and Tolliver are both going to TASER instructor school. And that's just this month, so those guys are going to that. Already said Sam and Jordan has started. August second, we did a little roundup. We made five physical arrests. We charged four more individuals with multiple felony cases that's gonna be sent down to the prosecutor's office. Of course, August third was the one-year anniversary of Scott Dolly tragically dying in the line of duty. So we kinda wanted to remember him. School resource officer, met with Rick Edwards today, superintendent. I think most of you know Rick. We interviewed Jason Lyons. I've known Jason for probably somewhat, not real personal, but about the last ten years. He's been a Galpelis Police Department officer for about the last ten years. He's got roughly twenty years overall in law enforcement. Rick wants to implement the SRO this year, so he wants to try to expedite this process. So I don't know if I'm warning you, cautioning you, advising you, or what you'd call it. But just so you know, the salary will be forty-nine, nine-twenty, twelve thousand dollars, single coverage insurance, and roughly six thousand dollars retirement contribution. So that comes up to less than sixty-eight thousand. The school will cover a hundred percent of that. Basically, that's within their budget, so we won't have to pay anything directly out of pocket. There is a few expenses with uniforms and stuff that we will cover. It'll be, it'll be minimal. So that's something that I'm gonna put together. I'd already spoke with Taylor this morning about putting together some exact, down to the penny figures, but those are very, very close.
And he'll utilize one of our cruisers?
Yes.
Okay. And then.
He'll be, he'll, he'll be a city employee. And it's however, Rick's working on an M O U that he was gonna present to Scott. And I told him, you know, I said probably have Mr. Toy look at it and also share that with council, you know, the normal process. And he said, that's fine. He said as far as, he would request the way most, every place does, it is we pay them and then they reimburse us. We can do it monthly or quarterly. He said however, whatever. And I said, that will be up to Scott and Taylor. So that was already kinda discussed. It's however, it's most convenient for everybody. They're, they seem to be very committed to it, so I think it's a, it's a good service. Obviously, it's gonna be nice to have. Hopefully, there's some relationships built over there with the kids. You know, for the safety aspect, that, that, you know, we're likely to have somebody there, you know, all the time, so that's nice. It'll also help with caseload as far as the calls we get there to the school, because I don't think people realize how many, how often we get called to the school. It's not that officers will still go over there and still walk the halls, especially the canine officer. Kids love that. So we'll still be a, a big presence other, in addition to the SRO, but we're gonna have the one officer there, you know, pretty much every day, so that's gonna be really nice. We're gonna try to implement some programs for the, the children during the summer months that I think it just seemed fitting that the SRO would implement and be a part of, like summer school and things like that. And since he, you know, quite frankly, if he's doing his job properly, he should have all the contacts, all the, you know, all the relationships and things to help further the kids along, so I'm excited about that. Again, assuming it's approved by you guys and Scott and everybody's on board. That was just kinda finalized today. Again, as far as Jason goes, if that's who, that's who the school has agreed that they would like to hire. I've known him. He's in Nelsonville. I think he's, give or take, forty-seven years old. Roughly twenty years of law enforcement, most of which has been in Gaiety County at Rio Grande and the Galpelis Police Department. Ironically, he's a Nelsonville York graduate, and he lives about five minutes outside of town. So they're getting somebody, he has some grandchildren, young in the school system, and a couple of, I wanna say cousins. So he's got a vested interest in, you know, having the program succeed at the school as well. So that's always kinda nice, have that personal connection there as well. Obviously, if this goes through and there's a motion, then I'll bring him, you know, he'll, I'll make sure he comes and introduces himself following you guys. I have a copy of his application. If anybody wants to see it, I've sent it to Scott. We can forward that to anybody if anybody wants to see his resume. He has, he does have a lot of training, inactive shooter training, which I think nowadays is, is, you know, vital. A lot of interaction with juveniles. He ran some special programs with juveniles down in Galpelis. So that's kinda the area that he likes. He likes, you know, working with children, things of that nature, so. I hope it's, I hope it's a huge success. I'm very optimistic. That is all I have for you tonight. Oh, nope, that's it.
If I can expand on that for council. So in order to get this in place, by time the school starts on, what, twenty-fourth, I believe?
Twenty-second.
Admin, administrative.
As far as committees go for police and fire and finance, I believe we already have enough money in place that we would not need an appropriation to get started, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sabinckton. I'm pretty confident we have enough in salaries and everywhere to get going. We looked, but the attorneys in the room scrambled what was left good in my brain, so I'll have to double check.
Okay.
No offense, Bob. I meant those.
Did Chief fill out the P O properly for this?
So the question.
Different question.
Different question.
Not yet.
We already have a finance meeting in place. Do, does council desire a police and fire committee meeting prior to? And then it would be my recommendation to have a special council meeting Monday. I've already checked with Susan. She's gonna be out of town, so Monday would work for her. To have a special council meeting to amend the staffing ordinance and also to hire Jason, Jason as well, to Officer Lyons, to get him squared away, so we can get him over to the school on time for the school to start.
Myself, I, I'm okay with running it through finance once a night, plus the other members of the police and fire committee.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we can discuss it then once a night. Then that would be my recommendation. I'll meet her anyway.
Is that it, chief?
Yes, sir.
So mileage for two thousand fifteen?
Uh, no, I didn't calculate the mileage.
Oh.
I'm, I'm not.
Are you gonna hang? Well, I'm glad you did bring that up. Yes, so.
Right? See, I wasn't kidding.
Okay, yes, the cruiser, so, okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, chief.
You're welcome, chief.
Any more council questions for Chief Fitch?
Okay, now, welcome, Jordan.
Welcome, Jordan. Jordan Castle, that sounds familiar.
She made it past the week.
Would your grandpa, would your grandpa happen to be Vern?
No.
There you go.
Thank you. I appreciate your hard work. All right. All right, moving on to first reading. Resolution twenty-two seventy-six. I need someone to introduce it, please. Thank you.
The resolution authorizing the city manager Scott Frank to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Committee State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. Whereas the state capital improvement program and the local transportation improvement program both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvement in public infrastructure. And whereas the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, is planning to make capital improvement to paving two thousand twenty-two project. And whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community and is a qualified project under the O P W C program. Now therefore, by revolve by the city of Nelsonville, that city manager Scott Frank is hereby authorized to apply to the O P W C for funds as described. That city manager Scott Frank is authorized to enter into any agreements that may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Do you enact by capital this eighth day of August two thousand twenty-two?
Okay, any council discussion on this matter? This is basically free, that's correct. We'll be at the beginning. Okay, all right. Motion to adopt. So move. Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right, where are the city managers' report? Frank, floor is yours.
Great. At the end of last week, Mr. Toy, myself signed some documents for the five-point-four water loan, water loan and the grant we got. I got another form today. I'll get down to you tomorrow that we need to sign as well. McDonald's, so I, some of us have talked briefly, but McDonald's would like to sponsor, have a sponsorship at the pool. There's not much left for this year, but they would like to do a five-foot-by-eight-foot sign and pay eight hundred dollars to have it down there inside the fenced-in area. If that's something that is acceptable to council, I can let them know and we can do an ordinance at the next meeting. But I could let them know that way they could get the sign ordered. If you're not okay with that, or you would like to table that or go to a committee, we can do that as well. But I know we have talked about it in a couple of different committees, I believe, or just passing, I don't remember exactly where all of talked about it. But I did get some dimensions and costs, and that would be for the rest of this year and next year.
A quick question on that. So if we did that for them, then would that be something we open up for other businesses that might wanna do that?
I, I mean, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I would like to, I think it's a great idea, and I also would like to see it down to all fields too. That would be outstanding to see. If you go to any high school field, most high school fields, if you go around to other schools, they're, they're sponsored by self-advertising space on there. I think that's a great idea. Our intention would be to buy new speakers for the pool. The current ones we have are in pretty rough shape.
Yeah, if we did sell signs, we'll get money going to, I mean, I, I get those speakers for this.
Go to the pool. Did that work? If we took the money in, would we be able to put it?
In the Aquatic Center fund? There you go. Aquatic Center fund.
Yeah.
Repairers and like, sure, this way.
Sure. Donations, right?
Yes.
As long as council approved accepting the donations? Doesn't have to be.
How did we arrive at the eight hundred dollar figure?
Um, you know, it was just random. It was one of those that I have no idea what advertising costs. And I know at the time when they asked us, we happened to notice our speakers were blown. And I asked the Adam, I said, how much does it cost to replace the speakers? And he came up with decent speakers and he said eight hundred dollars. I'm like, well, eight hundred dollars.
I'm just wondering if we could like find some, whatever, high school ball fields that are advertising, like somebody mentioned, and figure out what they charge and just to get a.
We get some, Justin and I know some people.
Yeah, so maybe just find, I mean, if we're under, you know, I just wanna make sure.
Right, right.
But I think it depends on how big of a, so.
Yeah, five by eight is pretty big, significant, yeah, so.
That is a big sign.
Yeah. And I spoke with this porter about, because he does a lot of advertising. He said it at about five hundred, so we're gonna, we're gonna bring a deal eight, I think. For a five by eight? Yeah.
Great.
About five hundred is what they do for the West State football.
Okay. McDonald's has been a really good supporter of swimming pool, my time here. And they've, they always buy a lot of passes and hand them out to people and everything else, so they've been a really good partner of ours, so.
Where would you act this on?
Um, we got the fence along the, on the inside, of course, the fence along, because I asked if they would want it on the inside or the outside. They said inside. And we put it on maybe along the alleyway, do the alleyway or along the elks. Either one.
Cool.
So speaking, speaking of the pool, the shades that we ordered in February will be here tomorrow.
I don't care, so you're leaving storage.
Yes, we're not gonna put them up for the winter. We'll put them up next spring because there's no reason to weather them. You'll see the crews out painting square tomorrow as far as the curbs and such, so yellow painting will be getting done in front of hydrants and for the no parking areas. And then the hydrants that aren't new will be getting painted as well. The bright red, I don't know if we'll actually be getting to the bonnets yet or not, but they will definitely be getting to the faded red hydrants and they will not be painting the, they're not be painting brand-new starts connections that we just put on there, so we had a long talk about that. And for mainly around the square before we're starting now, we're trying to prep for Prey to the Hills. Get that area nice first and then start branching out from there, going up in all the different directions. The Star folks, so right now we have one crew of three, plus one of our guys, and they have been absolutely amazing. They're getting so much work done for us. They've been weed eating, asphalting. Tomorrow they'll be painting and we're actually gonna have a second crew starting with us later this week. I believe it's supposed to rain tomorrow, the next day, so to be after that, that I think Jason's gonna start asphalting as well as continuing to prep for Prey to the Hills, which will be Crabtree, getting all the grass out of the leechers, prepping for the old timers game on Sunday. And I just can't thank those guys enough. Man, they've been a manpower mover, and our guys have been able to get a lot of stuff done with those, those crews over there, so.
Are those crews something you typically do or is this kinda special?
Send you programs here. Um, I don't know if, I don't have any pre-COVID experience, so, but this is the first time we've got to use them since COVID. And we're sending one of our guys with three of theirs, and he just takes them out and they, they're just happy to be out and about. They, they don't work. We just take them back and swap one out.
So does that play on the way going forward?
I have no interest in stopping. So.
Awesome.
And great attitude, and they, they're happy. They're just happy to help out. We're happy to have, so. So that'll continue. Also, we're talking about the pool, so in conjunction with the planning and development meeting we have later this week, which we're gonna talk about solar. Our roof on the pool is twenty-two, twenty-three years old on the pool house there. So we got some quotes coming in for a new roof. I talked to the mayor, Chansey. She's pretty, she's a project manager for solar as well. And she suggested stance, standing seam roof as the longest-lasting roof to put solar onto. And so we've been getting quotes for standing seam roof. We've had one or two come back and it's roughly thirty-four K so far. And that's thirty-year warranty roof. What I know about standing seam, it should last much longer than that, and that should put us through the life of the pool. And if we do decide to put solar on top of that, then we should be set for at least our time. And so we'll have those two meeting for planning and development. Also, I know we talked earlier in the year about a new liner, so we have quotes for that now as well. The first quote has already come in. We should have a second quote before next week, so. In addition to street committee, which we talked about next week, we probably should have a parks and rec meeting to get that on the radar, to start talking about for budgeting, because believe it or not, we're in budgeting season already for next year. And so two hundred, two hundred and ten thousand to resea, or to redo the liner on the pool, which actually pretty darn good.
That's a lot cheaper.
I thought it was gonna be worse than that. I thought it was gonna be.
That's on the read, bro.
Yeah, that was the first quote. So the second person came down, came down today, they're coming, either they were here today or later this week, I'm not sure. So we hopefully will have a second quote by next week when we do the parks and rec meeting. But that's all stuff that we need to start putting into the budget and then talking about the pool house. We, oh, also, we didn't get the Rocky Community Improvement Grant to paint the pool house. It's possible. I'll have some money this year to maybe do it. But if not, I would like to put it in the budget to do it next year for certain, to paint the pool house, because it's getting pretty faded. Adam's gonna do all the painting he can on the inside, so everything should be painted on the inside and the doors. But the actual pool house itself, the brick and the high-up areas, we definitely, I would like to get that painted as well for next year. So that's all I got pending your questions. Any questions for Scott Frank?
Since you're probably gonna have a parks and rec meeting next week, maybe that they get time to talk about the sponsorships.
Yes.
And then maybe set some rates across the board and that way there's guidance, you know, going forward.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else? Okay, with that. Okay, with that, we, thank you, Mr. Frank.
Sir.
With that, we go to the good of the order. Mr. Sherman?
Well, thank you. Welcome aboard code. You can go back to the city. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Booth?
Welcome, quite welcome you as well, and very happy to hear that we're able to get our SRO for the school. It'd be nice, a little peace of mind to have some extra tech over there, so good work, chief, and I'm sure everything will go well. Thank you.
Mr. Nick?
Mr. Nick Smith? Jordan, we're glad you're here. Nelsonville Music Festival's in a few weeks, and city residents are free this year, but you have to get your tickets two weeks in advance at the box office at Stewart, so that should be really great, and we love those guys, so. Should show support and be out there.
Okay. Mr. Clement?
Yeah, a couple of things. Today's my wife's birthday, so happy birthday, Missy.
I come and say that too. Today's my daughter Madison's birthday, too, so.
All right, there you go. And welcome aboard the ordinance. And next week is Pray to Hills, correct? So hopefully we have good weather.
Is it next week?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that's. Yep.
Yeah. So hopefully we have good weather and a good turnout and it's a big success.
Hi, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Well.
So Buck's out tonight?
I left it at home. I wanted to welcome Jordan, so welcome to the team. Glad you made it past six days. Let's see if he'll be here by the next meeting. You know, as the chief, close to nice for. I also wanted to remember Officer Dolly. I know we have that anniversary. I saw that online. And I know that a lot of our, you know, hearts go out to him and his family. Also, didn't want to mention, I did not realize Pray to Hills was already next week, but I did want to mention that Pray to Hills is coming up, and please go out and show your support. They, it takes a lot to put on that event. I know they were really, you know, trying to get more volunteers and help with that, and it takes a lot, but it is really good for our community, and I just, I want to see people be able to go out and support it and, you know, enjoy it, and I think kids really have a blast out there, so. And then please, you know, help if the city comes by and asks you to mow or weed or whatever, please help out and assist in that so the city looks really nice from for when people are here, so. Other than that, I hope they have a great Pray to the Hills, so look forward to mine. Thanks, everybody.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I can only, do you have one?
Yep.
I can only echo what's already been said. Welcome aboard, Jordan. Chief, I appreciate the efforts that I've seen with you and the sheriff stopping by, pulling me over the other, not pulling me over. They just happened to notice that I was walking.
Yeah.
And stopped by to say hello, and they're doing some great things with the county. And that issue that you brought up, I I do hope to address that at a later council meeting. Glad to see we've got the school resource officer in place. We've got the code enforcement. Talk about some grass cutting. My neighbors, if you happen to be around my place, I'd love for you to look at their backyard. That's another story, though. Other than that, no, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Child. Yeah, we need to know how you really feel. Jordan, once again, thank you for coming on board. Think you're going to do great, have great attitude. I'd like to thank all our policemen or firemen, our city crews. Seems like everybody's really working together as a team. One of the rare things that's happened to Nelsonville over the last couple of years. It's really kind of nice to see everyone working together. There's no turmoil or fighting or arguing, which is nice to see. And also, Mr. Frank, I'd like to thank you for your work for the city. He said earlier that that's five-point-four million dollars in water, but five-point-four million dollars. Okay, guys, well, I had to say it for you because I know you're slow, but. I think it's a great thing and I appreciate your work, so. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Child?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Yes.